...in Greenville ISD. And before I get started, there are some people in the room that I haven't met. So I just want to say that, you know, teaching has been in my heart, even though I came into teaching a little bit later than most. But I started as a first grade teacher, then I was a second grade teacher, then I was a third grade teacher, and then I took a leap to be seventh and eighth grade algebra teacher, and I found that to be quite a leap. And then I was able to go to a 5A high school and be the dean of instruction. So, teaching has, I've found to be a great passion that I love. Kids make me very, very happy. I love their aha moments and the spark that they bring into our lives. And so, I just wanted to say, through this process and through being here in Greenville for the last five years, it's really great to be a part of a city that appreciates our students, recognizes the things that they can contribute to our future, and our Greenville kids are just amazing. So, thank you for being here tonight. I'll get to the point while you're here, so now about finances and the projects that we're talking about. Lance Melton is an architect with Corrigan. He will be doing some of the project discussion and answer questions. And Doug Witt is with Semco, and he will be answering some of the financial questions that you might have. So, let's get started. So, you can grab yours if you want. The first thing is, this has been a process, the bond, to bring the bond to the election on Saturday, May 7th. And so, I'd like to share some of the progress with you that we went through. So, the Greenville ISD Board did call for a bond election for $169,400,000,000 for the May 7th election. And if approved, this bond will accommodate enrollment growth, expand courses, and update The process, as I mentioned earlier, there are some members here tonight that were on the community advisory committee, but there was 47 members that participated over a six month period, and had some long nights and lots of discussion that was made up of parents, grandparents, staff, community members, local businesses, and church leaders. The committee, again, went through several processes, but just as an overview highlight, they gathered information, they listened to feedback and input, they looked at each of the potential projects, they then prioritized the projects like four different times as they gathered more information, and then they came to a consensus of what they were going to take to the board. So, some of the things that they studied, they did look at all the district overview, they toured facilities, they looked at the demographics to see how we've grown and where we're growing. And again, when they toured the facilities, they looked in rooms, they looked under buildings, they looked around buildings, the existing conditions, the principals spent days upon days presenting all the conditions of their building. And that way, we saw through the lens of teachers and principals what they thought was needed on their campus. Then Doug Witt came in and talked about the bonding capacity and the tax impact pact, the potential solutions, and the cost analysis was done with Corrigan and Lance. We did community surveys, both in phone calls and online, and then the committee members literally made point after point after point where they wanted to present to the board for a tenure plan. So Lance, you want to talk through the proposed project?
Sure. Thank you. So, just to give you a little background of who I am, so Lance Melton, an architect with Corrigan Architects. I have been doing school projects for my whole career. So, whenever I was in public school in San Angelo, Texas, growing up, I took classes and figured out at the age of 14 that, wow, architecture seemed to be something that I wanted to do, right? And so then I decided to pursue that path that was inspired by a high school instructor. And so I went off to Texas Tech, graduated, became a licensed architect, and been practicing ever since. And, you know, I have three kids, okay? All my kids went to public school. I am a taxpayer, right? And the thing that I take to heart in what I do, and the reason why I chose to do architecture and chose to do architecture and public education, is because I want to see that we get the most value for our student learning environment possible. And it has been a mission of mine to where you have a gamut in schools. In school, no two school districts deliver education the same. They may be under the same guidelines as far as what has to be achieved by metrics, okay? But just like Greenville ISD and Greenville City, the city of Greenville is not the same thing as Rockwall. It's not the same thing as San Antonio, Texas, right? Your foundations that are constructed in buildings here, they're not the same foundations that you could build in San Antonio. They're very different. So, that's the reason why I wanted to find out, what can I do to give this still the best value? And that is by listening to our clients, by helping our clients understand what their buildings are now, how they measure up to what current regulations on a state level are. So, when we started working with Greenville ISD three years ago, and the first thing that was looked at was what are the capacities, the student capacities of our schools, right? So, you understand what enrollment is, but teachers and principals and administrators feel the pressure whenever a school becomes overcrowded. You can't understand why, other than the enrollment number. But then we have a state metric, so many of your schools were constructed long before there were any state metrics that defined what a classroom size should be. So, Texas Education ABC did that in 2004, and the first time they updated it ironically was in 2021. So, what they said is, there is a minimum square feet allotment for every single student, depending on the grade level that they're in and the subject that's being taught. So now there is a true metric to determine what is the appropriate size of schools, what's the appropriate size of classrooms, right? Well, that drives a lot. Well, then whenever you compare that to the enrollment, you get an understanding of, now we understand why we feel overcrowded. And we look at the demographic numbers and compare that to what you have. Took the committee through the whole process of understanding as much as they could about public education, the way instruction is done, pros and cons of success in instruction environments in the district. We also walked all of the buildings and looked at the assessment of the current facilities and how they're functioning, and how the environment is actually doing, inside and outside the building. And then from that, working with the committee, they evaluated all of the needs, considering, just like Sharon said, growth, right? Okay? Aging conditions and changing expectations, which one of those changing expectations from school environments is Texas Education Agency. There's also things like building code, okay? Now, if you build a new school, what has to happen in the school according to life safety building code? Tornado shelter. You didn't have to build those before, now you do, okay? Which makes sense. But a new middle school, right? So it looked at grade level alignment. The existing middle school, almost every single classroom in it does not meet current TDA size standards. Doesn't mean the classes can't happen in there. What it means is fewer students can be in these classrooms, which further exasperates the challenge with the capacity, and the school is already overcrowded as it is. So, the new middle school is going to go on a site that is currently owned by the school district that's right behind the hospital, okay? So, this project of $105.1 million for a 1,400 student capacity middle school, even the number shocks me, guys. I don't like the fact that construction costs are where they are today. I really don't. But this facility would be roughly 240,000 square feet on a Greenville site with new roads, new utilities coming to the site, and there are, we've already met with Hunt Regional Medical Center, talked about getting access from their property to the north of the middle school site, and also visited with the current owners of the property west of the middle school site to gain access from there from the road. So, now there's two additional points of access that are potential for the new middle school site, because 1,400 students, grades 6 through 8, at a middle school site, that's lots of traffic. So we want to make sure that it's the right location, it's close to the center of town, and it's most appropriate for a learning environment that meets the growth needs and the instructional needs for the students. The LP Waters, LP Waters was evaluated by the committee at length, okay? Facility originally was, you know, Carter, okay? And then it became LP Waters later. The building was originally constructed in 1950, then it was added on to, I believe in the 90s, or it was in the 90s, okay? So, the existing building, the cafeteria is way undersized for serving the population as, also the existing facility at LP Waters has, it's, it's outlived its life expectancy. There are pretty significant degraded foundation issues in the old portion of the building, which is a great determiner of a major reason why the committee determined that, look, we need to look at replacing LP Waters, because we still want to stay with the early childhood model, but we need to provide a safe environment for the kids to do that. Plus, LP Waters currently is built right up on the road, and one of the major things we heard from staff is that pedestrian access to that school at arrival and dismissal is extremely dangerous. So, okay, so we, so we, the plan that we came up with to solve that problem, the district already owns the property to the south, yeah, so these are pictures of the existing building, and then the crosswalks at the street, we don't really have a good picture here that shows how close the building is to the street, as far as the limited onsite hair drop-off and pick-up area, but if we go to the layout, I think that's later.
Yeah, that's later. If you do the passing, we'll cross and we'll.
Yeah. So I'll come back to the site. Sorry, I'm just winging it, going with the flow. But, anyway, the solution solves not just the aging condition issues and the capacity issues, it solves site access and safety issues. So the new facility will be built on the same property where the old baseball field is that's south of the existing campus. And then high school renovations, you know, everybody refers to what we learned is, it's the new high school, right? It was built in 80, guys, okay? That's not new. Now, it's newer than LP Waters, right? But it hasn't really received much love since then. So there's a lot of interior finishes, there's lighting replacements, they've got lockers that are in the building that, when we visit with the staff, they're like, we don't even use the lockers anymore, and we'd love to capitalize that space for instruction. So that's a major component of that. So $23.6 million is going to high school renovations. The ag facility, this was one that was brought up by the citizens committee that was supposedly part of the previous bond package, but didn't make it into the bond package. But they felt, and they're here, and they can speak to it as well, that the ag facility had to be part of it. And because those kids have an amazing program, they need a place to have their program, they don't need way off somewhere, they need it somewhere close. So there is space on the high school campus to where that facility could be constructed. That construction price includes the building, roughly 11,600 square feet of building, but it also includes exterior amenities for exterior yards, fencing, secure access, also roads and utilities to support that building. And then transportation services facility, $3.1 million. Part of the project scope that Greenville ISD tasked us with about three years ago was evaluate what is the most appropriate location for the transportation facility. And so there was a study that was conducted, possibly relocated the existing transportation facility down to where the old tech stock was, it's not far from L3. Well, because of the distance down to that other property was the main reason why the district chose to keep the transportation facility where it currently is, because really, bus drivers are the key, right? You want to make it convenient for the bus drivers. So the current location is more centrally located to your populated center of the community, and so its location is correct. It just needed a lot of love, because the stadium that is right next to it used to be the old high school stadium, and that high school stadium was constructed in the late 40s. And their bus driver facilities is currently located in the old concessions and restrooms underneath the buildings, and they needed it. So, that's included in the law. So when we get to the priority projects, out of all the different projects that the committee asked us to look at, once they got to a priority of these are the top projects we're considering, we want you to tell us what the cost was. So when we're looking at the project scope, we have to determine what is that scope? So we have to look at, is it just interior renovations like at the high school? Well, what is that renovation scope included? So then we understood, well, it's new lighting, it's removing the lockers, it's building some additional interior space, it's updating restrooms to accommodate people with disabilities having those barriers removed, because the new high school, new high school was constructed in 1980, which was also before the Americans with Disabilities Act, okay? The Americans with Disabilities Act was adopted by the federal government in the early 90s, right? All public institutions are required to remove barriers for people with disabilities. There is a substantial amount of existing barriers for disabled students and staff within the building that this project scope will take care of. Well, then we have something that we can look at, and we can start putting together an appropriate project budget. That's an example. So, we look at what a similar scope, what the current construction cost would be for that, okay? In a range, because it's not an exact science, because the projects aren't designed. We have a literal narrative scope, and we can look at the existing plans and get a general idea of the total square footage that might be accounted for. Then we have to look at construction cost escalation, because remember, the projects are not designed yet until the voting public says to the district that we agree with what the citizens advisory committee and the board put on the ballot. And if the citizens say, we agree with this scope and vote for it, then the design process would start. So then we have to design the scope and get it out on the streets after finishing the design package with the school district, to get the scope clearly defined and issue it on the street for all contractors to turn in bids. So then we have an exact price. Well, between the time of the bond passing and design, that's roughly anywhere, depending on the project that's in the scope, nine months to a year out before the projects will even go on the street to bid. Once we receive the bids, then the district has to evaluate those and award. So we have to add escalation to the point of when the construction start and the bid contracts would be awarded. So that's included. And the budget is also included permits, surveys, permitting, the permitting fees through the city, okay? You have to have surveys, you have fees for architects and engineers, you have construction material testing that's directly by the district, any commissioning, you also have furniture, fixtures, and equipment. So several of the projects have new furniture in them, okay? They have new equipment that we're building in the building, they have new technology. So, you're not going to build a new school without the technology. So any of the video displays, okay? Any of the data racks, the wireless access points, that's all in the project scope. And then you also add contingency to cover unforeseen conditions, because LP Waters is a perfect example. We're tearing that building down. That building was constructed in the 50s. We do not know what's going to be in that building when we start tearing it down. So asbestos abating is also taken care of in this. So that builds the total project budget. So the bond projects are expected to accommodate enrollment projections for the next five years, minimum, okay? And the one thing the demographer had pointed out, so the demographer worked for the district in 2019, and then the demographer has updated the numbers based upon where you were at the end of 2021.
Let me just say that that demographer report will be presented at the April 19th board member meeting.
So those, you know, whenever we're talking about growth considered, we have to take the growth, look at the project scope, not just at the middle school, but look at the high school and look at the elementary population, because you're planning a long-range plan for the whole district. So the committee actually looked at a true long-range facility master plan. That was part of what the committee recommended to the board and they adopted. All of the components in the long-range facility master plan are not part of this bond, okay? So the bond is the initial first scope of a long-range facility master plan that the committee felt was most appropriate to go for now, then, because the school district is an evolving creature, just like the city is an evolving creature. So the more you grow, right? The more students you have, the more needs you have. Older a building gets, the more maintenance you have to provide. So, long-range plan included the condition assessment of all the existing facilities and their capacity and their code compliance, or lack thereof, wherever it was. Then the capacity assessment looked at all of the existing facilities across the district and looked at what is their capacity related to the Texas education standards, okay? And then facility planning, that's where the citizens advisory committee came in, evaluated all of the data, and assisted the district in putting together, hey, this is what a long-range facility master plan is, and of that long-range plan, this is what we recommend to go program. So, the assessment concluded visiting with every single staff, principal, okay? And custodian and maintenance personnel. So that way we could learn of the challenges that they encountered. Switch mics. My dying. Good. So the, so with the district staff input, wow, that's so much louder. Okay. So with the district staff input, then the architects, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineers, civil engineers, we also had a registered accessibility specialist that went and looked at all the campuses for ADA compliance issues. They could learn from the staff, what are the challenges that you have in your buildings? We talked about site access, LP Waters. The staff is what made us completely aware that LP Waters had a significant safety issue for parents and students at arrival and dismissal because of its proximity to the street, okay? It's not something we generate, it's something we learn, okay? Once we get all of the information from all the staff at every one of the campuses, then and only then did we actually, all the architects and engineers, walk all the buildings and look at it. And mainly that was to put together the facility assessment document that will be a living document that moves forward with the district to help them in the future look back. These were the issues that we had then, this is what we can solve moving forward. Now, one of the challenges with that document, even though it's supposed to be living, it's a snapshot in time. So it's not whenever it was icy outside, it's not whenever the soil was completely wet and heaved up here, maybe when the soil was really dry and it was down here, right? Because you have very expansive soils in this community. But we did not, even though we looked at portable buildings, the portable buildings, I just want to clarify, at each of the campuses, they do not weigh into an assessment criteria or a facility condition index. Because one thing I've learned a long time ago is whenever I hand somebody a document and it's an assessment of all their existing buildings, they go, well, that's a lot of information, now what? Right? So what we use is a facility condition index when we go back to that. So we use a facility condition index that helps a reviewing body, or a building owner, a district, or a committee, understand that, okay, this is a metric of an education facility. If it were new today and code compliant, then it would score 90 to 100, okay? For instance, if you build a new house, when you move into your house, you have the builder, you work with them, it's great, the process was fun, there were no challenges with your builder whatsoever, you move into it and everything's happy, right? Everything's perfect, all things work well. No, right? Everybody's ever built a house. It's not perfect when you move in, but it's still in excellent condition, right? It may not include all the things that your wife really wanted you to have in the house, but it's your honeydew that you're going to get done for them later on down the road, right? Same thing with a public building, right? Everything meets code, everything's up to par, it's not perfect. You're going to have challenges and issues that are maintenance, but those maintenance needs in a brand-new building are minimal. As the building continues to age and get older, right? The more maintenance items come up, right? And once a building gets so old that building codes, like the life safety building code that's now currently required by the state of Texas and by Greenville, okay? Many of your buildings, matter of fact, all of your buildings, okay? Don't have the things in them that would comply if they were constructed today. They just don't. Doesn't mean you have to bring them up to code right now, but it does mean that you're not compliant with things like Americans with Disabilities Act. You have to bring those into compliance. So the more of those items build up, like, district has a maintenance and operations budget that only funds so much. The majority of that budget funds teachers, pay, okay? Staff salaries. But when it comes to maintaining building, there's a fraction of that budget for maintenance. Well, the older a building gets, the more maintenance needs there are, for instance, rooftop units. This district has packaged rooftop units all over the place. How many rooftop units does the district have, right? It's, yeah, it's like 400 something. It's a lot, okay? Well, those things have a life. You know, if they make it, if they make it 20 years, man, you've done great. Well, the district has had a major challenge with keeping up with that lifecycle replacement, in addition to all of the other items. So, as those things continue to decline, the poorer the condition the building gets. So, when we evaluated all the facilities, if it's in red, then that meant it fell in that poor area. It does not mean that that building is not usable. It just means it falls into that criteria that it's a significant amount of effort to bring that building into a learning environment that's safe and appropriate, okay? So where it's green, so like Buie Elementary School, it's 95, it's great, okay? The ones that scored in the 80s, Carver, Crockett, Lamar, Travis, they're in good shape, right? Even the ones that are in, that are in yellow, okay? They're fair condition, but if you walked in those buildings and you evaluated, you might rank it differently. But when we rank it, we rank it considering all of those previous components, okay? So, only the poor buildings really get the major focus. So then you have, then you look at your building age. So everything that's shown in red here is when the building was originally constructed. And then each of the bar line items next to it communicate when the buildings were added on to. So as a taxpayer, you need to know that your district leadership and your elected board members through the years have been good fiscal stewards with your tax dollars, okay? You have maximized the use of your facilities. When you construct a building in 1950 at Greenville Middle School, and the last time you did anything to it was in 2001, and you've been using it this whole time, 72-year-old building, and you've used it with high schoolers or middle school kids, okay? Just imagine, if you had several hundred middle school or high school kids in your house, how long would it last, right? So, they have truly done a good job. And when you walk through the middle school, especially the older portion of the middle school, the custodian crews in the district are phenomenal. I mean, they have managed to maintain these buildings the best possible way they could. But it's still the age and the size and the limitations. So then you scroll down, the average age of your building is 50 years old. So I'm 51. I don't feel surprised, I used to, that's for sure, but that's still a long life left in a human, but in a building, we should get as much as we can. For a school building, when you're looking at the 70 to 80-year-old building, you have more problems from a maintenance or deferred maintenance issue, and you have major issues because no longer do they comply with modern instruction. I mean, many of these buildings didn't even have air conditioning. I mean, many of these buildings didn't even have air conditioning when they were built, much less technology. So then, your capacity, LP Waters was, it's 87% of the maximum capacity the building could support. Travis Elementary was 88%, okay? And this was done with a snapshot date in October. So enrollment has continued to change since this was done. Has it gone down? No, it has not gone down, it's gone up. Okay? So Greenville Middle School, when we looked at this capacity, 93%. And that principal is not a complainer. They make do, and that's the same thing that you had that we encountered across all the campuses. They just don't complain, neither do the staff. They do their job and they teach kids, right? So, this is LP Waters. We already talked through some of the issues with it. The exterior, the kitchen and the cafeteria, then the slide that's down at the bottom center shows the structure, the structure and the crawl space in the old building, which is why it's concerned, it's pretty severely degraded. You can keep going. So this is the site concept, the site fit concept of put a new facility just to the south of the existing facility, increase the amount of onsite arrival and dismissal driving areas for cars to stack safely unload and load kids before they drive back onto the street. This project, because of the district owning the property behind it, when we were doing the different studies, this one allows the new facility to be constructed before the existing facility is torn down. So, minimal impact to the existing function of the school while the new facility is being constructed, which is critical because the school district is going to continue to educate kiddos. So Greenville Middle School, you know, 72 years old. This campus, provided that the bond is successful, and when the new middle school opens, okay, this facility would accommodate, Travis would transition to K-35, New Horizons School would move to this campus, and the district admin offices will relocate to the middle school. So the existing facility will still be utilized. The challenge at this campus is the old gym, okay? The old gym is not handicap accessible in any way. I mean, not at all. A major undertaking to make it handicap accessible. Plus, the old gym is, I mean, it's got some structural issues too. So that is something that is not handled in the bond to figure out what to do with this, but it is something that is in the long-range facility master plan, is to figure out how best to utilize the district property considering the existing facilities. So this is a site fit study for the new middle school site. This does not include the potential locations of added road access through the hospital property that's to the north where the track and the football field is, through the hospital properties there to the north. Already spoken with them, and they said they're open to discussions about creating vehicular access there. And then to the west, where the tennis courts and the football field is shown currently, there could be access to Wellington through that development there. So, that helps the neighborhoods that are already existing, there being multiple site accesses. But, this facility does have to accommodate all new utilities, new road infrastructure, and of course, the new 1,400 student capacity middle school. So, now the new high school, the district did a little facelift to the front of the building three years ago, I guess, but the inside is still pretty much vintage, right? One of the staff members told us earlier today, says, well, is the scope going to do anything to the library? We're like, well, we could. Right now, what the high school staff had told us was, we've got lighting issues, we've got ADA issues, we have finish issues in our classrooms, we have lockers we want to get rid of. But, they'd like to have new furniture, okay? Well, as far as we can stretch that money to get anything done in the library too, that's what's going to be done. So, the high school will get a tremendous amount of additional instruction space. And the other thing that was looked at with the capacity analysis for the committee was, how long can this high school sustain the district considering growth and the building's existing age? This campus is good for the district for many years to come. So in the long-range facility master plan, there is a component, this campus can be expanded to accommodate the high school growing to 2,500 students. That'll blow your mind there, 2,500 students at the high school. And why would you not reuse and utilize the existing school campus whenever the bones of it are in really good shape? It does need a lot of facelift, it needs ADA improvements, but, the new CTE facility that was done in the 2014 bond is fantastic. It's great. So it's going to serve Creval ISD for many, many years to come.
That lands, I would like to just also state, the CTE building did give us 77 pathways for certifications and a lot of opportunities for our children, including early college. And with the addition or the expansion of the middle school, that will allow us to take more CTE classes down to middle school as well as increase our pre-AP classes to prepare our students for that early college platform.
So this is a sample study of where the lockers are on the first floor and what can be done to expand the learning environment where those lockers were. And this was an idea that was given to us from the high school principal. Awesome. It wasn't anything we came up with, they came up with, which is great. And then on the second floor, where the locker banks are now, they're, I guess the top of the lockers are about yay-high, but they go as far as the eye can see. So it truly is just no man's land. So, once those are gone, now those can be used for current modern instruction, which is breakout, they do group projects. So it really helps expand the course offerings and success for students.
And this goes back to, 40 years ago, we needed lockers because every student had a book for every class we had. Well now, most of our course books are online, and so our students have Chromebooks in their rooms, so they access their books while they're in the classroom, and we don't have our requirement for offers.
So then the ag facility, this was a plan that was done by the ag instructor, I think prior to the 2014 bond, is that correct? So, it will include classrooms, the actual design, we'll go through and work with the current staff and figure out what it is. The space allotment for the building perimeter itself was 11,600 square feet. That's just a budget line. But then there's outdoor pens, what's not shown here, I don't know if we have a site image, there was, there's also a substantial amount of parking that would go along with this, road access, and of course, we have perimeter fencing, right? And one thing that's, when we've done ag facilities for other districts where they're located near campuses, we love competition, but we love competition whenever it's safe and secure. So there will be surveillance cameras that are part of this project. There will be access control gates in and out of the facility so that whenever the kiddos, animals are there left overnight, they can actually be monitored and safe.
And I will tell you that I met with the FFA officers, and they believe, right now, people are limited to offer their animals to participate in FFA. They have to either know someone that has a pasture that will let them put their animal on it, or their parents, family members have to have a pasture. So, the officers of FFA currently, one wishes this had happened for them four years ago, but also think that the program will grow exponentially if we have the opportunity to have animals here on campus.
Yeah, and one thing I'll point out on the ag project, somebody asked me this question recently, which I thought was a good one. So, that project cost amount sounds really high for just a barn. I agree with you. I completely agree with you. I don't like it, okay? But one thing we cannot do is we can't go back to the well and ask for more money if we don't have enough to do it. So, the budget is set based upon what we can predict this could cost, depending on what we find as far as utility expansions and everything else we have to do to accommodate this building, okay? Then, the other component of it is, if there is any savings in that project budget, that dollar amount that's allotted for the project will go to ag program support elsewhere in the program in the district. So that could go into ag welding, it could go anywhere the staff of the district feel like these dollars can be allocated to further support the ag program. But they won't be allocated to something different. So transportation, here's the beautiful picture of the existing transportation in the 1947-ish stadium, and their offices are actually located under there. So, how important are drivers for our kids? Pretty important. They're hard to come by, you want them to stay. And right now, there are facilities for where they go to get their training and to use the restroom and get checked in and get their bus and drive out. But that's been a passion of the board since we've been working with the districts to do something for the transportation department. There is a portion of this project that the district actually funded out of their MNO fund balance. It's not included in the bond, which is a new maintenance, two bus bay maintenance facility and a wash bay that is under construction right now. The scope that is included in the bond, if you'll flip to the next one. So the piece that's in, do you have a pointer? Okay. So the three-bay building that's here, this is all existing, the three-bay building right there, that's what's being constructed right now. The new, what's included in the bond is the building that's up to the top that would be a new driver's facility for their training facility, their lounge, their restrooms, and then also parking for them. And then, to the right where the buses that are shown to the angle next to the football field, notice that's where the existing stands used to be. So what's included in this bond is also demolishing these old 1940 stands and expanding the capacity for the buses, because one thing the district has faced along with student growth is the need for the base school buses.
So again, the factors that the committee, the community advisory committee looked at was the aging building, the growth within Greenville, and the evolving requirements of TEA. Texas Education Agent.
Yes.
The economic development in Mayor Ransome's office, I shared these slides with me. If you went to the city, state of the city, you saw these slides. But I think it's important to see that the anticipated growth within the city is real. You see it every single day as we drive by new land areas that are being cleared. But 535 new homes were built in 2021. 4,300 home sites are planned, and we recognize that that's not necessarily houses that are being built, but it is a projection that we have to look at. And you'll notice it says "within the city limits", but we know that within the city limits doesn't limit what the students that come to Greenville. So, it could be, it will be broader than that. And then, businesses are coming, they're investing capital investments into the city, and when the businesses come, families, and and the businesses that are here are also reinvesting into the businesses that they had. So that means they're bringing additional employees in, and again, new employees, additional families. And then there's the seven-year summary of all the monies that's being spent within Greenville to make sure that we're growing the city, and we need to make sure that we're growing our schools as well.
Okay, good afternoon. Some of you were here this morning, I'm not moving around. Good afternoon, it's good to be back. My name's Doug Witt, I'm a senior managing director with Semco Capital. I serve as a financial advisor to school districts in Texas that undertake financing programs when they use bond money and other financing techniques to invest in the public school infrastructure within their community. In the state of Texas, the primary mechanism by which we fund and build facilities is through voter-approved bonds, it has a dedicated tax rate. So within this chart here, within, say for example, 2014, 15, the total tax rate of the district was at $1.362, and that's made up of both a maintenance and operating tax rate that's used for everything else, and then an INS or interest and sinking fund tax rate that's used for voted bonds. In 2014, 15, 31.5 cents of that $1.36 was dedicated to the voted bonds that were approved by the voters. Since then, your tax rate has come down from 14, 15 at $1.36 down to $1.12 in 21, 22. So you've had tax rate reduction of actually both of your components of your tax rate. The maintenance and operating has gone through state-mandated compression, as they call it, just lowering the IMF, excuse me, the MNO tax rate. And then the INS tax rate has come down as the district's tax base has grown to support the bonds that have been outstanding. Another thing that we've done, and this process has been a lot of work in process for many years, including in 2020, we did a refinancing of existing bonds, 2014 bonds, to lower the interest rate at record-low levels that were occurring after the pandemic. We utilized $3 million of interest and sinking fund balances dedicated solely to voted bonds for early retirement of those bonds. And we shortened the amortization length of those bonds. We accelerated principal to prepare your bond model for the next generation of facility needs that you may have as you go through this process. The term earlier was used, bond capacity. 169.4 million is not your bond capacity, capacity meaning the maximum that you can do. It is the amount that the committee drew the line on the priorities of the projects. It is certainly within any realm of school finance that we utilize. Some of your neighbors are at the maximum INS tax rate that's allowed, at 50 cents. We're well below that today, and we'll be well below that if you approve the bonds. If you do approve the bonds, the tax rate will need to go up on the interest and sinking fund side by approximately 11.15 cents. That'd take you from the 23.85 cents you are now or so, up to around 35 cents of INS tax rate. Again, the maximum being 50 cents. And for those of you that were back here in 2014, your INS tax rate has been up in the 30 cents area before. It's 31.5 cents following that bond election, and it's come down since then. We're required by law to publish what a $100,000 home is in terms of the dollar amount of taxes that that home would pay. We provide a chart here from 100,000 to 300,000. We take out the state-mandated 40,000, or excuse me, the homestead state exemption that you will be approving in May. Right now, your state homestead exemption for school taxes is 25,000. It's going up to 40,000 with voter approval in May. Everyone votes for a tax rate on themselves, so it is going to pass. And so, when you look at this, a $100,000 home would have to pay $5.58 in projected monthly increase in taxes, or if you prefer, an annual basis, just under $67. If you have a $300,000 home, that would be $24 and change per month, or just under $290 per year. There's another slide later on that talks about those who are over 65. State law allows for those who are 65 years of age and older to apply for a school tax freeze on their homestead. And we cannot, regardless of whether you approve the bonds or not, go above that state-mandated freeze on their school taxes when they apply for it at the age of 65. The tax impact, again, for the $100,000 home is right at $5.58 per month. There are a few other slides further back that talk about tax rate and comparisons to other districts. I will say this, that I'm here primarily to answer any questions that you have. This is a vote regarding the programs that the committee put together as a priority for facility needs of this community. There is a very lengthy plan of finance that goes with that, that's summarized in the impact of you in terms of tax rate and impact on you as a homeowner. If you have any questions regarding the plan of finance, I'm here tonight to answer those questions.
So, just so you know, that we do have a website. So just so you know, that we do have a website with all the information that we've talked about, the community advisory committees, all the information that they recovered, their decision-making process, the data that they saw, is all on our website. And there's a tab that says Bond 2022. And this presentation is also included on that website. We have it categorized into different categories from the proposed projects that Lance went through tonight, the growth, the planning, the homestead exemption calculator. So if you do decide not to vote for the 40,000 tax exemption, you can do a calculation at 25,000 tax exemption, or you can do one at 40, based on your house value. So we'll tell you about what taxes is. As soon as we have the demographers report on the 19th, this growth slides will be put under growth section of the website. I'm going to reiterate what Doug said. If you are 65 or older and/or has a disability, you can file for this exemption, then you have no tax increase of that 11.15, regardless of the bond passes or not. So I'll just cover this and then we'll look at the slides that Doug referred to a minute ago. So of course, obviously, if you're not registered, you can't vote. And there is voter registration cards out at the table. You have till Thursday, April 7th, so that's fast approaching. It's hard to believe tomorrow's April 1st, but it is. So you have to, you have to register by then to be able to vote in the May 7th election. Early voting starts April 25th and goes through May 3rd. And then again, May 7th is the Saturday for this bond election will be on your ballot. And so this slide, I'm just going to leave up just for a second and like come to look at it and think about it. If you wonder about the bonds that have recently been approved and or will be on the ballot in surrounding communities, commerce, all the way to 40, that is a 1.3B is a boy billion for 40 school. So I want you, we're right there in the middle. And then there's a summary, and again, this slide, all these slides are on the website under Bond 2022, tells you what each district asked for in their bond package and the dollar amount that they requested and are passed. This is the one you were talking about.
Yes, so this one actually has the components of your tax rate. So on the far left is Greenville ISD, 21, 22 at 88 cents of maintenance and operating tax rate. So that's the tax rate where any revenues are collected, goes into the general fund that operates the schools and pays the salaries and so forth. The 24 cents is the interest and sinking fund component of the $1.12. And again, that's down from 31 and a half cents in 2014, 15. And the 88 cents is down from $1.4, which is where it was at for this district for several years. If you approve the bonds, the 88 cents does not change. If anything, it could go down, but it's assumed here to be level. And then the 24 cents goes to 35 cents, hence the 11 cents and change that I talked about earlier. So when you look at the districts on the right, the interest and sinking fund component, you may or may not be able to see it out there, but the four on the right are at 50 cents. That's what we talk about when we talk about bond capacity, that's the maximum tax rate that we can go to. At 35 cents, you are well below the rest of the districts on here, who are 35, 37, 38, 50, 50, 50, 50, and so forth. So the amount of bonds that you have outstanding, if you want to say it in another way, the amount of bonds that you have outstanding for the population size of this district, for the tax base size of this district, is very modest currently, and it will remain modest even if you approve these bonds going forward. So another example, I want to say one thing about this morning. This morning, we have a session just like this, and there were some questions from the audience. And again, I hope y'all have some, we would love to answer it. But one of the things you need to know is that in 2020, when we did the refinancing of the existing bonds and lowered the interest rate to save $20 million of interest costs, we accelerated the principal, we paid $3 million down early on the retirement of those bonds. We have to go out into the credit markets. The credit markets are people who invest in these bonds and buy these bonds. You are a high credit quality district, and a AA3 is a number that's out there, but it puts you either at or above your peers. So independent credit rating agencies that get paid to do this in financial markets and provide reports, view this district as a good, solid credit. They may have had some issues in the past, but when you go through and you have to disclose to investors, anything that would be of material concern to an investor, you have no negative marks going into the market. So the conclusion I reached is maybe a few of you may have a worse feeling about the district's finances than people who are professionals in the field that have to do that for a living and invest in the district. So you are a good credit quality to bring to the market. I have a fiduciary responsibility as the financial advisor to the district to represent you, if you approve the bonds, into the market and the sale of the bonds to underwriters and investors. So anyway, to make a long story short, this is not a difficult process for me based on the financial condition of the district and the audit reports that you have that cite no internal control problems. So whether or not you want to vote for this or not, the tax rate increase or not, the facility improvements or not, is your decision. But don't make it based on some assumption that we have a financial challenged institution here, because we do not.
Okay, and here's a summary of the election that we went over already, but there's the dates and make sure if you want to register, register and make sure if you want to vote, that you are able to vote within the timeline. And so I'm going to open up just for questions for Lance and Doug, so see what we have there. And we're going to bring the microphone to you if you have a question, okay? So we'll keep one mic up here. Do you have a question?
Thank you both. I have a question for Mr. Witt, the finance side. When do you estimate that this bond will be paid off? I know that's an estimate, but how long will it take?
Yeah, so there are several assumptions that go into a bond model. When you're building this type of new schools, the standard in Texas, state law allows us to amortize bonds up to 40 years. With this type of bond model, we assume 30-year amortization with a 10-year option to prepay early, which we have done in 2000, with the 2014 bond. So it is a 30-year amortization with a 10-year option to prepay early. And other assumptions within that model that came up this morning, for example, we assume some growth in the taxable value of the district, which has been growing at the last couple of years at 10%. We're assuming a 5% growth for the next five years. One gentleman in the audience said, well, that's pretty conservative because we're already going to grow about 15% or more this year. And so what happens when that value goes up? That means we can prepay on bonds and shorten that amortization.
I noticed that some of the projects had some, I guess, some more advanced renditions. High school kind of had some concepts of what that would look like. You did provide some really good information I wasn't aware of, that the costs were estimated on similar to, so similar to projects. That was, that was good information. But it's still kind of concerning that, well, there's no concept of the new middle school. What is it going to look like? How confident can we be that that similar to is really similar without bids or some concepts built, kind of show the community what it's going to look like? How many square footage, what are the requirements? I know you provided some information about the number of students it can hold, but I'm just kind of curious, like why, why wasn't that done? Think that would help things if the community saw what they were getting, you know?
That's a good question. So in school district bond planning, you know, we started with the committee in the late summer, okay? So in order to determine what the long-range facility plan is and then prioritize the top projects, you know, you don't even know what projects you would be considering designing until you get through with this process, right? And nobody's forcing the committee to make a recommendation or the board to call the bond. They chose to call the bond. And the reason why we do not design facilities ahead of time unless, there are districts that do this, okay? That they pay for design of their buildings prior to the bond to be able to fund the construction. They may do that because they're in extremely fast growth, okay? Other districts have to do that. But when they do that, they have to pay those dollars out of their maintenance and operations fund, right? And so what the district, architects and engineers, they're by law, we cannot work for free, okay? We work for a minimum amount, okay? So even when we did the planning and helped the district with the assessment, all the architects and engineers in our team, and even the consultants that were on our team, they all worked for the lowest amount they possibly could to help the district with the plan, because they're skin in the game for the design team too. But when the, when the district chooses to get a plan, then we start the design. And it's, the metric is, the district can't justify paying for a design if you don't have proof, right? That's always the concern is, because you want to get as much data and proof that the need is there to get the voter confidence to move forward with spending taxpayer dollars on design and construction of new buildings. That is the main reason why the buildings are not designed yet, they're concepts, okay? So like, for instance, the concept site fit for the middle school is a similar size, 1,400 student capacity middle school that was just placed on that site to show, hey, will this school work on the site? Same thing for LP Waters. It's taking the square footage, the size of classrooms, that and the capacity needed to support the number of kiddos at LP Waters, just to do a study. But there's no, we don't know what the building's going to look like. The building will actually be designed with the staff, okay? Provided that the voters choose to vote for it, okay? The buildings will be designed with the staff, the designs will be presented to the school board, the school board will actually review and approve the design aesthetic of the building. We don't, we provide recommendations, but we have provided multiple designs to hit that mark of what meets Greenville ISD, that's what we have to do. So hopefully that'll answer the question.
Yeah. It's not my field of expertise, but I do bond issues throughout the state of Texas. It is the overwhelming predominant manner. If the, if the school board were to authorize the design of a facility not approved by the voters, they would be held in bad regard, right? Because that's spending money that we haven't given you the authority as taxpayers to spend yet. So it's, it's an impossibility to go out and do that, except in rare circumstances. So when you go up to the billion four type districts that their demographer says we need three new high schools over the next 10 years, we need six middle schools, and we need 12 elementary schools, well, those districts then know that they're going to have to build these buildings and their bonds are going to be approved at some point and they can get started. I've been doing this for 30 years. It's a very rare circumstance that it's ever done in advance, except for the growth. I have seen one case where a district through the pandemic had their bond election canceled because we could not vote and go to the polls, yet they knew that they needed a high school and they were going to build a high school eventually, whether this bond election passed or the next one or the next one. And they wanted to be out in front of cost escalation and knew that the next facility this community was going to build, it's going to be a high school, it was the oldest, most dilapidated facility that they needed. So in that circumstance, they had the general fund balance to do that and save the bond money for the actual construction dollars. But it's a very rare circumstance that that happens.
I wanted to add to that, because you didn't ever really say a value, but here we haven't been building schools very much. So here we haven't been building schools very much, so no one's really familiar with the cost associated with what you're talking about. You've said everything except for plans are very expensive, they can be very expensive. You mentioned this morning, $50,000 per design, and I don't know if that was, you know, it was the right number, but you don't want to go through the process of redesign or designing multiple buildings and spending over $100,000 or more if you don't know if you're going to need it.
It's a good point.
We also need to let you know that it wasn't like this is a shot in the dark. We know how many students to plan for, we know what the state requirements are per student as far as space, so we know the square footage that we have to have. So it's not like we're planning in the dark. And also, this is the way we did Bowie after the bond was passed. The staff and even the kids had ideas on what they wanted Bowie to look like. And it came, it was unique for those teachers that taught a certain way, using the outdoors as much as they do. And the same thing will happen for LP Waters in the middle school. I think the only thing that was left out of Bowie is one, some of the kids wanted some slipper slides. Left those outside. You know, each campus will have its own stamp of what they want.
If I could, as an example, and going back to my previous life, Mr. Melton's 100% correct, he cannot start design other than at his risk, and a career is a horrible thing to waste, without the GISD at this point having the money to pay him and authorize him to do it. Now, as you mentioned one, here's a classic example and a question. Tyler is building an intermediate school, and it's $60 million is their bond. So there was a question asked, why is Tyler's $60 million, being Greenville's talking $105? Okay, first, if you do some research, Tyler is 1,000 student capacity, not 1,400. The other one is Tyler knows this is going to pass, they paid for their engineering and design work upfront. It is done, and that bond passes, they can let a contract the next day. They paid all of that design on their own nickel. Greenville doesn't have that luxury, unless somebody knows something I don't, which is entirely possible. But other than a concept, you really can't go any further than that without the authorization and funding to do it by law. Unless you want to be an employee, you can go that.
Diorama, I don't know what you call them, but they have a model and can look at it, it's just made of foam and paint. I love a concept.
Models. That's true, but that gets to be very expensive when you're paying engineers $200 bucks an hour to do it.
This won't address your questions specifically about where's more detail, but it will address, talking about comparison, you know, 105 million versus Tyler's 60, what's going on? Paul's explained some of it. But what he said, that means Tyler's voting in May, just like us, for their middle school. What that means is if they approve, they can start bids the next month, because they've got the design, they're ready to go. Whereas we'll be anywhere from eight to 12 months behind them. So we need to add on to that, an escalation cost of one year. And, and you know, we all know that construction costs are escalating, you know, exponentially right now. So, so that's another reason why there's a 60, ours is 100, well, there's a one-year delay factor of escalation that could build right into that. That's true. Another thing I can elaborate on Tyler is that that campus is actually built on an existing site similar to what LP Waters is, okay? So all their infrastructure and the roads, they're already there. So new middle school for Greenville, that's not the case. It's all brand new coming in. So if you have questions.
I have a question for Doug. We were mentioning the AAA3 credit rating for Greenville. We're not, the, the rating is pretty strong for us. What would be the maximum that this district, based on its strength and quality, could borrow on, considering we're looking at other districts into 1.3s?
Yeah, you're, you're right at kind of your maximum. You're in the AA category, AA. There's a AAA rating that's provided by the rating agencies. It's based on the permanent school fund guarantee. So the permanent school fund in the state of Texas, if you, if you, as voters approve the bonds, we make application for that. It's just a matter of making the application. And then we get a, an enhanced rating, AAA, which is the highest in the United States. And the permanent school fund rating is the best credit quality in the United States, even superior to the federal government. So with that said, we also have an analysis of our underlying credit rating and the fact that you are in the AA category, AA3 is the term, because it goes 1, 2, and 3 within that category. But you're at the threshold for this size of tax base, this size of district, between an A1 and a AA3, and you're at the higher category of that. I don't have it in the slide here, but I presented it to the board and the committee where I can where I compared this district's underlying credit rating from an independent analyst. So I'm a, I'm a fiduciary of the district. I say great things about you and want to. This is an independent analyst that puts a credit quality on it. And if you look at that with your neighbors and some of those that are on the list there, you have the higher of the ratings. Some of them are there with you, but many others are not and they're the one grade below that credit quality.
What could we borrow up against? 300, 300 million? Or could we go up to?
Yeah, so that's a great question. We get this question all the time and we actually analyze some of that as part of this early stage. So people ask us, hey Doug, what is our bond capacity? Well, it's not a singular answer for the following reasons. What is our bond capacity in record low interest rate environment of 2.5%? Or what's our bond capacity in an average interest rate environment of 3.5%, 4%? Okay? What is our bond capacity if we continue to grow at 10 to 15% for the next five years versus what if we slow down and start only growing in our tax base, 3 to 5%? Okay? What is our bond capacity if we issue all the bonds today? What is the bond capacity over a 10-year period? So when you look at that billion four on there, when that bond is approved, they're not going to go out and issue a billion four tomorrow. They're going to issue $200 million a year, $300 million a year over the next seven to 10 years, depending on how that growth goes. So if you take the exact same snapshot, short-term bond capacity analysis under the same conservative assumptions that we use to put 11 cents on 169 million, we were right around, if I recall correctly, 267,500, taking you up though with more tax rate to get there up to that 50 cents. So it'd be a higher tax rate impact on you. But you have far more bond capacity than what the 169 million is. And over time, you pay down existing bonds, you'll pay down on these new bonds, we will pay them off early, you'll refinance them at lower interest rates and bond capacity will be at natural. In fact, this was built and designed, the refinancing bond in 2020, was built and designed to provide some additional bond capacity. We saved $20 million of interest cost on that particular refinancing. So when you do this, the model will be built so that five years from now, 10 years from now, depending on what happens with your growth, and it can change, trust me. There's one district up there that had a bond capacity of about 65 million at one time. They're voting 400 million. Their demographics, their tax base is changing. So this model is built to, here's what we're going to deliver in facilities and here's what it's going to cost you. It is not a, what some people call an open-ended or blank check type of election. It is very specific to the priorities that the committee set, based on the needs and the aging of the facilities and the ranking of the facilities and whatever term y'all use in terms of how good the facility is and so forth. So I hope that answered the question.
Yes, it did answer. And that was one of the, I was on the committee actually, and that was one of the questions we really wrestled with was the fact that interest rates are low. If we don't pull the trigger, we, these, these decisions will have much more expensive ramifications in the next five to seven years as interest rates rise.
The question was asked in the morning session, maybe not in the session, but after, what happens if it doesn't pass? What's the restrictions on the next one? And there's not really any restrictions. Theoretically, you can have bond election in November and May. It would be unusual for a May bond election to not pass and then the board to call for another one for November by August. That would be a rare occasion, could happen, but based on feedback and it's legal. But the thing that's, would normally happen is you'd come back in May a year later and every one of those numbers on there and every one of my numbers are going to be different numbers for you. That's a fact. That is a fact. Interest rate's going to be different. The cost of construction's going to be different and so forth. So if it doesn't pass and you still want that same middle school, you should expect it to probably cost more the next year. In fact, I've seen that in many districts that had some struggles about how do we explain to the voters that it's gone from $50 million facility to a $60 million facility? That's a tough discussion. I will say this about the, the cost estimates here. You are not the only district looking up and seeing numbers that seem, my gosh, $100 million for a middle school? That seems a little bit high, right? This is across the board everywhere in, in all of our school districts. Okay? But you also have to understand, that's the, what we're, let's call it the numerator. For those who taught math in here, the numerator has gone up. So maybe we're working with a $100 million middle school, but the denominator has also gone up. Our tax base has been growing at 10% over the past two, two or three years. Okay? So even though the cost of the building's gone up, the value that we have and revenue source is also going up, and that means the end of the day is you kind of got to look at the chart of what does it mean to me as a taxpayer and put a value judgment on that, if that makes sense.
Yes, that does make sense. If you could get a slide up there showing about the Fornie district, I had a question for Lance. This was interesting. We didn't have this in front of us when we sat down, but I'll give it to him. The next slide, move it one more to the right. Yeah, the five elementary schools, four middle schools, 1.3 billion. I had a question. Lance knew the numbers whenever we were looking at it, what it would cost for the school that we're going to need, just the one middle school. These, these numbers are, this is astounding what they're going to try to pull off for 1.3 billion. I wanted your opinion on, do you think with the cost of, with interest rates rising and with the cost of construction and supplies, lumber and things, do you think that's going to be a tall task, considering they haven't started building one on this?
For, for Fornie?
Yes, Fornie just.
Okay. That's a very good question. So Doug pointed out something really significant a while ago. Okay? Fornie, though they're asking their voters to give confidence to the school district to sell up to $1.3 billion, they do not yet have the capacity to sell that much bond. So they're going in increments, is that correct? Yeah. So they're, what they're going to do is they're going to sell, provided the voters give them approval. You know, May election comes, it passes, they sell the bond sometime in June, July, they sell it for as much as they can possibly get based upon the evaluation. That will determine how many of those projects can be done. So the other challenge with that is, we don't know, in Fornie, for instance, just like in Greenville, we don't know what the value and the economy is going to be in one year, three years, five years. So they've got one new high school, one high school expansion, five new elementaries, four new middle and intermediate, two middle school expansions. They have to, really tough decision because then they have to make a priority discussion on, I've only got 200 million to be able to get the projects done. They have to pick the ones that are the most growth need for them at the time, which means they have to wait until they can resolve the growth issues at other campuses and other age groups until the bonding capacity gets to a point to where they can actually sell more money to do more projects. So it's, it's a tough scenario. Prosper went through that, Frisco went through that.
And need the facilities before we give them the ability to issue bonds on those levels and that type of fast growth market. One of the other items I want to add about growth, when I'm talking about growth, I'm talking about growth in the taxable value of the district. Okay? The taxable value of the district can grow without any additional students. Your facility plan and size of the middle school is built on how many students you think you're going to have. So we're talking about two different, if, if you think, hey, we're not going to grow, they're not going to build houses out here, that's fine. That's, I don't need you to grow in student count. If you do, you're going to need the facilities and you have to build them to some professional expertise in estimating what those number of children will be and the grade alignment that you want for your community. But I don't need your enrollment growth in order to finance the bonds to build the new facilities that are needed, even if you didn't grow just from the age and obsolescence of the facilities.
I think an interesting one on this slide, between this morning and afternoon, I've gotten a lot smarter on this. But the, the Fornie one I find is interesting. If you look at that, they're talking 9, 10, 11, 12, roughly 12 new buildings.
To go with.
You divide 12 into 1.3 billion, you get about 100 million a building, which is right in line with what Greenville's looking at doing. Same thing with community. They're talking six new buildings, 650 million you're at about. I guess, like it or not, you're stuck 100 million a copy for a school. And I think another one, Superintendent Booth and I were talking this morning, you have to look at the overall picture of this thing, not just the building, but the total thing. The cost of the furniture alone to go in the middle school is probably going to be three to four million. It's not just the building that you're going with it and look at the supporting infrastructure and everything that has to go with it. That ag building's going to be a tough sell. I grew up in Kentucky where they raised some of the most expensive horses in the world and they're not in a $540 square foot barn.
Hey, that dollar does not include the animals.
Yeah.
Blow your mind, right?
The ag, the ag facility, just, I'm going to step outside of my lane, but the ag facility is not an ag barn. It is an instructional facility. It's not just, I, I was in FFA growing up this way. I grew up in the area, played sports in the FFA, whatever. And I had an ag barn. I knew what it was, it housed a few animals. I would look at that and say, okay, what, what is this? And we start asking the questions because we, we look at the amortization length of all of the assets. Of course, these buildings are going to last longer than the repayment period of bonds. But as I understand it, there's a lot that goes on to that. It's not a barn. It's a, it's a facility that includes significant brick and mortar, classroom stuff. And so I think that's an education process that the community can program.
Yeah, and that's something the community needs to get smarter on, for lack of a better term. You say the ag facility, everybody thinks a barn is going to stack 1,000 bales of hay in. There's a lot more to this when you talk about the classrooms, the supporting infrastructure, water surge and everything that has to go with it, but 6.5 million.
I can speak from experience because I have a child that's in ag and we need it in the facility very, very badly. We are the only school in Hunt County that does not have a facility.
I agree with you 100%, but if you write down 205 and you look at the ag facility for A&M Commerce, that what you see is effectively a whole barn that's out there. That's not what they're building here.
So I just want to, excuse me, I want to clarify. When you said brick and mortar classroom, it is, you said like, you said like, I heard you say like. So it is, we're all going to watch how to groom this cat. So the classroom environment is out with the animal instead of in the pasture. So instruction will be conducted, how to, you know, you're the, you're the FFA person. But, but, so we're going to, whatever, whatever instruction a student needs to know how to show and prepare their animal will be done in real-life learning experience in this learning facility. So I heard you say it. No, 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 you said like, but I wanted to hear it.
My daughter's a freshman this year. My daughter's a freshman this year and this is her first time raising a pig. I've never raised pigs either in my life. And I tell you what, it's really hard trying to just get information from other people that have and say, are we doing this right? Because we don't have instruction. We go out there, we feed it, we walk, we bathe it, we, we try to work with it. I mean, it's kind of hysterical to watch me run around trying to get this, this pig and then I fall down and my wife, my daughter's just laughing at me too. So it's, they need to, they need to pass.
And that's why my cousin Ray raises goats and the treadmill for goats. Who would imagine that, right? But I mean, they do, they work them out that way and so.
This is probably way early too, but has, has, there been discussion with the city about non-domestic animals within the city limits?
Yes. I have talked to the mayor about that and he, the city is, if it has, there's stamp on this one. Yeah.
And you can't get an exemption here in the city limits. That's what we, one thing we learned. If it's a, because we don't have an ag facility, if you have a decent size, size yard, the city will give you an exemption so you can raise an animal and your dog.
That's, that's all what I had to add. I had a number of things that I learned about that, that ag building as well when I was in the committee. And in my mind at first, when we wanted to build one, my mind thought, you know, we're going to build it over in an area kind of like Hunt County Fairgrounds. You know, students were going to be bused to it. And, and the reality is, is this is going to be built on the high school campus. It's near a neighborhood. It has to be aesthetically pleasing with, with where it is. It's also got, it contains smells. It's got a sports park there. It's not going to be just a barn that's been what's meant, what's mentioned, but a complete, not only a complete educational area, but we're an area for the animals to walk outside. And then Lance, you kind of added a little bit more than I do that, you know, if we don't spend all that, it's one thing, but it's not just a barn. If you want to, if you want to think about just a barn, it's the tech, at the Hunt County Fairgrounds, which also needs to be upgraded.
And conceptually, it's right outside the current FFA facility. So they literally walk out the door and this, that's where the facility would be. And for this mail, I just have to tell you that Ms. Thompson says if, they will have standards to keep their animals there and that it has to be washed down, cleaned out on a daily basis. And so she's convinced me that smell is not an option there. So we'll see, right?
I can tell you this.
It won't pass the sniff test.
Well, I can tell you this because Ms. Thompson said the same thing to us. And I am actually borrowing a small barn and a piece of land from a friend of ours. And one of the things they were worried about was that. But my daughter goes in every morning, cleans it, cleans the stall and she goes out every afternoon, cleans that stall. So there is no smell, but seriously, there's not. I mean, no different than if you had dogs in your backyard.
Another thing that wasn't, that wasn't mentioned on this that for those that don't know, because if people, not everybody's an ag, but people in apartments, they don't have a place to do this. Those of us that grew up in the country like me, like we didn't even have these questions. I had to learn that, you know, there's people that live in homes that don't have the ability to learn how to raise a goat right here and that's the purpose of this in an educational fashion.
There's all kinds of careers that extend, extend from this, absolutely.
That's grooming and.
Right. I'm going to, exactly. But the career factor is huge. You were exactly right.
I have questions for me on LP Waters. You're up. I've got a question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
On LP Waters, are we building a museum on part of this property? Is that?
So, so the, so LP Waters.
Let me just, museum was a word that was used in the committee as for starters and we're not going to, we're going to reserve history. So some people translated that to a museum, but we, the Carver letters on the side of the building, we're not getting rid of, right? We're going to find a location for that. But a museum, we're not in the plans because it's an educational facility.
It was a, it was a comment and a, and honestly a concern by the committee and they're here, they can speak to it as well, was that, I mean, it's a significant facility and site for the community. Okay? And they, everybody in the committee wanted to be respectful of that history and the site and the significance. There were people, when we were at LP Waters, the committee met there, and there were people that graduated high school when it was Carver in the room. Okay? And so there were some people that were like, we want to, we want to be respectful. You tell us what to do. Anyway, it wasn't that great when I went here. So they, they didn't have the same, you know, at least that gentleman did not, did not have the same significance. But the overall committee feeling was they wanted to be respectful of the life of the facility. So it needed to be, it needed to be something carried into the new facility. What that looks like, maybe a mural, like the sign, it may be a portion in the reception area in the lobby, but there, there's, there was a discussion about, with the committee, about saving a portion of the existing building potentially communicate, create a museum, but that filtered away and it's really just, just carrying the, the history forward into the new campus. Does that help? Okay.
Any other questions?
Sure. I'll see you later. Maybe something, let me know.
Yes, that, that, those questions.
Yes, that, those questions come up, I was on the committee, and actually, we thought about keeping a facade, but when we found out there's asbestos, and it's one of the oldest buildings in the city, we wanted to do the best we could to memorialize it, but not go the museum route, because of the cost of, we needed to destroy the building because of asbestos, and the structural issues in the gym are pretty atrocious.
I just wanted to make a comment about this ag facility. I would prefer that we do call it an ag facility. My family, I grew up, my family raised cattle. There's a lot more that goes on in there, and I think one thing, and I'm assuming that's going to be part of it that goes into this, is testing and laboratory work. So, I'm assuming as part of this, because back in the day, you have to test these animals. You have to teach the children. I was taught. We have a young son, he has not been exposed to this, because we live within the city limits now. And going back to what this gentleman is saying, I've seen a lot of my friends have to sell their land off, their family's land. Things have changed, you know, they get, we're selling it to other places because we're growing. They can get top dollar now. So, I think a lot of it is going to be, you know, it's expensive to do labs, lab work. So, I'm assuming part of that, is that correct, is going to be laboratories, because you have to do labs on the animals. And I just, I'm not saying it's like a science laboratory, but you have to have the classroom for that kind of thing and be able to teach it. Any other questions?
Sure, of course. I guess, you know, John, you mentioned rising costs. I'm experiencing that right now, building a house. It's not just 10%. I mean, it's crazy. So, I guess the question is, we get this approved, get things going, we get the designs, they come in a lot more expensive than we anticipated, even with the escalation. Is it just a matter of then we have to prioritize which project will not get completed? I mean, I'm assuming the dollar amount is the dollar amount, right?
The projects that are, the projects that are in the bond, that are, that the voters would vote on, they have to be delivered, okay? So, what that means is, we have to deliver the minimum scope that's commented on in the bond. Have to. Can't go back to the voters and say, hey, by the way, construction costs just went through the reef. We couldn't predict it this. We have to deliver what's in there. We have to consider with the district, there may be scenarios, just like the example was brought up about furniture, okay? The, especially with the campuses, that have to be a capacity scenario, right? The, we have to deliver a middle school that will support 1,400 student capacity, period. Now, we may have to start out with some existing furniture from the existing middle school if we, if we got into that scenario to help with the budget scenario, the issue, okay? But we have to deliver what is in the bond.
So, Jimmy, if we have to deliver a middle school, I'm going to step out of my lane here. You would scale back one way, you would scale back the scope. The middle school, you could maybe make it smaller, maybe, you know, TEA, he said, has minimums of square foot per student. He didn't tell us what they were, I don't know what they are, but I'm assuming that what we're, he's got in his mind as a design is a little bit more than the minimum. Well, you could scale back, well, okay, we'll only build the minimum, TEA minimum requirement for space. And, you know, you just have to scale back stuff like that. Maybe the, the football field would have to be two-lane track instead of an eight-lane track, or maybe four tennis courts instead of, I mean, you would just scale it back to meet if the cost was higher than what you thought. And if I'm speaking out of turn, Lance?
No, you're right, but we're going to avoid the two-lane track.
100 foot, just 100-foot strip, you're going to do 100 yards.
At 100 yards, 200. Hey, young. We could, we could have the ag come over and create a little path for them. No, good point, though.
The middle school, you said the property we're looking at is existing property behind the hospital. Is that a definite? Because I thought I had seen at one point there was a possibility of purchasing property. Is that property going to work?
So, I don't know about, I mean, there's, there's definitely in the long-range master plan discussions about, hey, future land is going to be needed for other schools, because the district only has, they have a property that's behind Lamar, where the old tech stop facility was. That could be, that, we did a site fit study, that could accommodate a middle school when needed somewhere down the road. Because even though we're building a 1,400-student middle school to support grades 6 through 8, literally in as little as five years or maybe 10 years, you're going to have to look at doing another one. So, Lamar, that property is already owned by the district. The property behind the hospital where this site fit is, is owned by the district currently and will accommodate a middle school. So, future property may be for additional elementary schools.
Are we going to use that property? I think there was a question at one point whether we were definitely going to use that property, or if we were going to purchase property that would accommodate.
Oh, no, that, that property will accommodate. That's the reason why we did the site fit study with a, with a campus that we've done that is similar size capacity. So, the whole site fit study is based upon a campus that we've already designed that's that big.
So, we don't have to factor in purchasing land with the current.
Correct. Yeah, that does not include land.
But I do want to say, and the committee can tell you this as well, the two sides that, because we own it, was the tech stop behind Lamar and the land behind the hospital. So, that, we never, I don't think we ever, committee, I don't think we ever talked about purchasing for a middle school.
There was, there definitely was, hey, we're going to, the committee, we're going to have to look at land, because the city's going to grow, and it's continuing to grow. Now, even the discussions about, hey, we need to talk about these people that are building these large residential communities, let's talk to those developers about carving out some spot for a future Greenvilleized elementary school. So, you're, but what you heard wasn't applied to the middle school, but land was part of the discussion. Land, however, is not included in the law.
And actually, that was part of the discussions in our meetings. A lot of us had discussions about, do we want to go the route of a high school or a middle school? And one of the concerns was, we don't have a parcel right now that will accommodate a high school. We know going down the road, the high school will last longer than, we've got the situation going on with the middle school, and we're going to, we're, so we needed to get the most value for the money. So, we chose, we chose to basically go the route of the high, the middle school over the high school, because a parcel, finding the purchasing that would have made the high school cost a whole lot more. We had the land, that was the savings.
Also, we discussed which property to use. We were concerned about, if we use the one at Lamar, like that would make all the traffic from all the city go to that zone, and you already have all the traffic on Jack Benny, and that might create a cluster. So, we decided to use the other one by the hospital to keep it centrally located, because you'll have homes and stuff being built on 380 as well as on this side of town, and so, that would make it, that would spread the traffic out better.